To order the meeting of the City Campbell Planning Commission of May twenty eighth to twenty twenty four, can we have a roll call? Commissioner Fields, resident, Commissioner Middles, absent, Commissioner Strasky, absent, Commissioner Gray, here, Commissioner Buckbinder, vice chair, count car, here, Chair Sizer, here. Okay. Um, my name is Alan Zuster. I'm the present chair of the of the City Campbell Planning Commission. Um, we'll go into the minutes. Has has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any uh changes that anybody wants?
Just saw one one little typo in there. I I can just, we say we adjourn to the next meeting of Tuesday, May fourteenth. It should say twenty eighth. It's just FYI. Otherwise, I'll move to accept the minutes.
We'll take correction.
We'll get one correction.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a vote on the minutes? Commissioner Fields.
Epstein.
Mr. Gray.
Aye.
Mr. Buckbinder.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kencar.
Aye.
Chair Sizer.
Aye. Okay. That passes. Um. Let's see. Uh, Director Eastwood. Communications and any agenda modifications or proposed post mortems?
Additional communications and agenda modifications are postponed. Chair Sizer.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna open for oral requests, oral requests. This is the point in our meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Is there anybody who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, either in the chamber or online? Okay. We'll close that. Okay, so before we start the regular meeting agenda items, I want to provide some information on how we'll be conducting the meeting for for each item. For each item, I will first announce the item and then ask for a staff presentation, after which the commissioners may have some questions for staff. After that, we will open the public hearing and first ask the applicant to speak if they wish, followed by any other members of the public who wish to speak. The applicant will have five minutes and any members of the public will have two minutes. Uh, we'll first have any public speakers physically present and then anyone on Zoom. Members of the planning commission may have questions for the applicant or any of the public uh speakers. Once we've received all public testimony, we will close the public hearing and the commission will then have discussion and a motion and decision based on the nature of the item. Um, before we start on the items, commissioners, do we have any disclosures regarding any of the agenda items tonight?
I just just visited the site again. That's it.
Anybody else?
Same.
Okay. Okay. Okay, let's start with the first item. I should say number two. Uh, eight oh one West Hamilton Avenue, conditional use permit, public hearing to consider the request of Parv- excuse me if I mispronounced, Parviz Saabe to allow indoor live entertainment and to formalize onsite general alcohol sales associated with existing restaurant, Ne- Najin Restaurant, with late night hours, two AM, public closing time, Friday and Saturday. The application under consideration includes a conditional use permit, PLN two oh two three dash one eighty two. Staff is recommending that this project be deemed categorically exempt under SEQA. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Our project planner on this is Tracy Tam. Tracy? It's all yours.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Tracy Tam, Associate Planner, presenting on this item tonight. Do you wanna say we have representatives from our police department sitting over there as well? And so if commissioners have questions for the police department, they are available for questions. And so the project site is located at eight oh one West Hamilton. It's located in the Redwoods Shopping Center, generally at the intersection of West Hamilton Avenue and Daryl Drive. And the current use is an approximately two thousand one hundred eighty-four square foot restaurant with ancillary alcohol sales. Just to give some background on the on the restaurant and the existing use, um, there was a type forty-seven liquor license that was issued by the Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC, for short, for a prior restaurant in nineteen ninety-two. This liquor license does allow for the on sale, um, sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits in conjunction with the restaurant. Now, the liquor license was transferred to the current restaurant in two thousand and three. Um, in twenty ten, there was an administrative plan development permit or PD permit, admin PD permit for short, that was issued by the community development director. And the purpose of the admin PD was to allow for late night hours for the existing restaurant. Um, the approved business hours as allowed by the admin PD was um from eleven thirty AM to eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday, and then eleven thirty AM to two AM Fridays and Saturdays. So they're allowed to operate until two AM on Fridays and Saturdays. Um, and if you recall, sometime last year, the planning commission did conduct a replication modification hearing um to amend the administrative PD permit to add a condition of approval, authorizing the community development director the ability to reduce hours of operation on a temporary basis if there was a documented violation that was occurring on the site. And so planning commission did consider the options and did approve this request. Now, at that hearing, um, it was disclosed that indoor live entertainment was occurring at the project site um without the benefit of a permit. So that's what we're here to discuss tonight. Um, to allow for live entertainment and also to formalize the alcohol sales. Since a type forty-seven liquor license has been issued by ABC. So yeah, so the uh that project for you tonight is a conditional use permit to allow for indoor dance slash live entertainment use that's associated with an existing restaurant um and to formalize the alcohol sales. I'll discuss the um indoor dancing, live entertainment use, and the alcohol sales in that further slide. This is just sort of a preview. This is the proposed floor plan. Um, you'll notice kind of in the upper left-hand corner there that there is a sound equipment storage area that's generally colored by the salmon pink color. Um, a stage that's just located right in front. It's sort of that like, I guess it looks quite on this screen. And then there will be a dance floor that's generally in that purple hatched area, all of which can be considered the entertainment area for simplicity. Um, you'll also notice that there are a couple of tables and chairs within that hatch dancing area, and those tables and chairs are gonna be relocated elsewhere in the restaurant when there is live entertainment ongoing. Um, otherwise, this would just be dining area for the restaurant. The existing restaurant is restricted to a maximum of seventy-two seats. Um, and that was based on the admin PD permit approval, and that max seventy-two seats is not proposed to be changed at this time. The indoor live, the indoor dancing live entertainment use is going to be incidental to the restaurant, um and it's really meant to offer some kind of entertainment to restaurant patrons. You're not necessarily gonna go there just to participate in the live entertainment. The expectation is that if you're going there for a meal and then you have some entertainment as well. Um, as part of the entertainment, the applicant is proposing DJ music, live music, and a belly dancer performer. Um, and the applicant will be limited to the dance floor that was shown on the previous slide um and won't be able to increase that size of the dance floor without a permit. Um, the live entertainment, while the business um hours are a little bit different, allowing two AM on Saturdays and Sundays. Um, the live entertainment portion, though, is restricted from, is proposed to be restricted from seven PM to eleven PM. Um, so the live entertainment will cease at eleven PM. Um, and on Fridays and Saturdays, the restaurant can still continue to serve meals, things like that, until two AM. And this eleven PM cutoff is consistent with other live entertainment uses in Campbell, um, including the downtown area. And the police department is not opposed to um the live entertainment hour ceasing at eleven. And to make sure there isn't any kind of noise spill over impacts to the adjacent tenants and the existing residents to the north and to the east, there are a couple of conditions of approval um that requires one conditional approval that requires the applicant to close outdoors and windows when there is live entertainment, um so um to reduce the noise impacts. Um, and there is also an extra measure that in the event the city receives three verifiable complaints, um, the applicant will be required to install sound deadening measures. That could be like installing an extra layer of drywall on certain walls to reduce um the noise impacts to adjacent tenants and to adjacent residential uses. And so as mentioned in my earlier slide, the CUP also proposes to formalize the alcohol sales associated with this restaurant. Um, as mentioned, um, a prior restaurant obtained a type forty-seven um liquor license from ABC, and that liquor license was transferred to this current restaurant. Um, but there wasn't a conditional use permit that was sought. And so we want to, since there already is a conditional use permit in front of you, and we wanted to also add the alcohol sales so that to formalize um the liquor establishment. Now, there has, the city council recently took measures to streamline certain uses in Campbell, such as liquor establishments, things like that, for beer and wine restaurants. Um, however, this application was deemed complete prior to those changes being in effect. And so we do have to uh hold the applicant to the rules in which they were deemed complete under. So the rules that council had approved not too long ago, unfortunately, are not applicable in this case um as they were deemed complete prior to those rules becoming effective. So yeah, under the prior code, the applicant, the applicant in which this application is subject to a conditional use permit is required to have these kind of alcohol sales with the restaurant. Um, now, so since the liquor license issued by ABC is issued to a restaurant, the alcohol service must absolutely be in conjunction with the meal and and full-service meals need to be available during the time in which alcohol service is provided. Um, since the expectation is that it has to be with a restaurant, bars are very different. But with a restaurant, there has to be full-service meals. But with a restaurant, there has to be full-service meals. And based on the surrounding area, I realize it's a little hard to see on the slide, but the surrounding area defining as this dark blue line there, if you can see my mouse, allow, formalizing this liquor establishment will result in one liquor license per two point three four acres, which is, if you look at the table, it's less than the Pruneyard Shopping Center and downtown Campbell. Pruneyard, the master use permit was approved, allowed for one liquor license for one point zero eight acres in the downtown area. Currently is one liquor license for one point three five. So this area would be less. So staff recommends the Planning Commission finds that there will not be an overconcentration in the surrounding area. So I did receive two public comments on this project. One was a phone call, one was, the other was an email. The email is an attachment actually to the staff report. If you wanted to reference that, it's attachment key. Generally, the concerns received from both parties were related to noise, hours of operation, increased traffic, parking issues, safety, and the neighborhood character. I did let both members of the public know that the existing restaurant is currently allowed to operate until two AM on Fridays and Saturdays due to the prior approval. However, the live entertainment portion of it, staff recommendation that it needs to cease by eleven PM. I also mentioned to these folks that there are conditions of approval related to noise. I mentioned it early, in an earlier slide where they'll be required to close outdoors and windows, and also if the city receives three complaints that there will be sound editing measures, they'll need to be implemented to reduce those impacts. And since then, I haven't received any further, since last week, I haven't received any further public comments, calls, emails, nothing of the sort. And with that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission approve the indoor live entertainment use and to formalize the onsite alcohol sales associated with the existing restaurant. Here for any questions, and our police department representatives are as well.
Okay. Let's see.
Commissioner Fields? Thank you. You mentioned three complaints to trigger the noise proofing. That's three complaints over a plan time period.
For a twelve-month time period.
This could be an applicant question, but I guess I'm just curious. I need to remember everything we discussed last time. How much does what is being described here resemble the activity that was already occurring in the restaurant? Like, are we permitting something that essentially has been happening? Or is this like, that new? Like, what we're enabling through this?
It's my understanding that at the hearings last year, the indoor live entertainment were already occurring. That was disclosed during last year's hearing. And so to legalize the unpermitted activity, this is what that condition, that, this, the, the conditional use permit for you tonight is to do that. Is to legalize those indoor live entertainment activities.
Okay. And again, this is probably refreshing my memory. All of the complaints that we heard at that time were related to sort of the outdoor event and not the indoor activities. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. There was a couple of over, I think there was an event in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, which both had outdoor activities related to like a live band or a DJ, some kind of musical performance. And I think there was outdoor cooking. And all the complaints we received related to those incidents were associated with the outdoor activities.
Have there been any complaints about indoor activities at this place prior even?
No, staff doesn't have record of that.
And then, thank you again for the staff report. My last question is, so if this all was happening a year later, like with the streamlining, this would just be ministerial, right? There's nothing about, in terms of the alcohol portion?
Well, in this case, it would still, under the current municipal code, it would still require a conditional use permit because streamlining allowed for beer and wine to be streamlined, but not for distilled spirits.
Which is what they're saying. But beer and wine, if it was just beer and wine, okay. Great. Uh, great, thank you. Those are my questions.
Commissioner Cameron?
Thank you, Chair. So the incidences that you referred to, the outdoor incidents, if I'm not mistaken, they were in March sometime, which correlates to the Yorani New Year celebration. Is that true? I mean, it's, it was like a family-oriented alcohol event. It wasn't, eh, let's just, you know, get like electric guitars out and jam.
Right. At my understanding, that it did occur in March, twenty twenty-two and March of twenty twenty-three.
Which are, which are, which coincide with the Yorani New Year celebration?
Yes, it just, just, I just went up, because I, I remembered this. It, it, it had to do, the, the concern, the thing that brought, was brought up is because it was, it was, it was outside in the parking lot, and there were a lot of people, and they were cooking and, and having entertainment. And, 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 and they had not gotten a permit for it. So whether it was for, you know, a, a New Year's celebration, the, the issue was it was an unpermitted event. Okay? So that was what it was about.
Okay. But I mean, right now, we're not talking about the permits for that event, rather than talking about their permit to operate in the house inside, inside. And so, uh, so what, what is the size of the dance floor that it had? And I may, I actually may know the answer to some of these questions. I just want to be on the record. It's a pretty small dance floor, isn't it?
I believe it's around twelve feet by eight feet.
So about ninety-six, ninety-six square feet, basically. And I've been there quite a few times myself. I've lived in the area for probably fifty years now. And I've been there at least twenty times, if not more, you know, and I've always observed it as a family-oriented place. Coming to my question. And, um, the, so when you say, like, they need to close the doors and close the windows, if I'm not mistaken, those are all facing south. The doors and the windows on this establishment face south? Do they face?
There is a door that faces.
It does? Okay, so I guess I've never.
What are you doing?
Now, okay, so, so thank you for that. And then the other thing is, the, uh, what we're asking for is the live entertainment to end by eleven, but the restaurant and the sale of alcohol can continue till two for those two days. That's what we're asking for. But live entertainment end at eleven?
Correct. And to formalize the alcohol sales.
Okay. And that's eleven every day or, or just Saturday, Sunday?
That would be eleven PM Monday through Sunday, so that's true.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Tracy. And I know you said this probably five times, right? So the two AM hours, that's not what we're talking about. That's already, that's already in.
Correct. That has been previously approved.
And there haven't been complaints about that?
Not since the events.
I mean, over the, over the many years, right? Not, not an issue. But we don't have very many two AM facilities, establishments.
We do have, it's more so in the downtown.
Downtown, other than downtown.
Right. But not so much.
Only bars. There's only bars that have two AM. Not restaurants. Right. Okay. And then the other, and we're talking, so we're talking about the alcohol sales are legal but non-conforming. So it's a little bit, so you can be non-conforming and still be legal, I guess. That's a whole, that's a different legal entity, huh, the non-conformance versus the legality. Criminal law versus city zone.
No, that's not, that's not really the distinction. The, the, the distinction is something can be non-conforming because it does not comply with the current law, but did not come, well, did not come into being until after the law was changed to the current law, in which case it's illegal. If you are operating under, if you are established legally under the pre-existing law and the law changes, you are allowed to continue as a legal, non-conforming use and plus certain other things happen.
Okay. Just kind of hard to get the two kinds. It seems, seems a little bit out of odds, but.
It just prevents new uses, the laws just prevent new uses going forward, plus they do something special?
Right. We would never have anything that's illegal but conforming. That would, that would never happen, but I can think of that. That I can think of. And I just had one question for the police officers, if I may. And again, I, I, I don't, I don't feel particularly strongly. I don't have any, uh, this is just me being, I guess, an old fogey. I hate to admit that, maybe, but in terms of the eleven AM live entertainment until eleven AM during the weekdays, during the workdays, as well as the weekends. I guess I just wanted to ask you, and I know we haven't gotten complaints apparently, many, but you know, that, I, I guess to me, without any information or basis of comparison, that seems kind of late to me for a weekday, eleven AM. Live music in any establishment? Is that, damn, is that actually, is that kind, and the police department, I know I saw in our report, is fine with, with the eleven AM. Is that PM? Is that kind of our, is that kind of the standard for the country, the region, the city?
Just real quick, good evening, Commissioner, Captain Brad Rice, Sergeant Lee Heitzman, we're both in administration, went so we received the permits. But to answer your question, eleven PM is pretty standard across the, the board, like staff Tracy was talking about with the downtown or Pruneyard. Similar establishments have a similar, similar cutoff.
Well, and, yeah, I know with our, we also did a nice chart with the ratio of liquor licenses, but I, I really don't think the downtown and the Pruneyard are really applicable to this area. But I do think that, that Camden area that we, that we referenced, that is very applicable. So I don't, I don't think that was an issue. But just, just for, even for an area near residences, eleven PM live music during weeknights, that's pretty standard.
That's pretty standard. The only, the one thing with this business is there is probably a closer proximity of residential surrounding it to the north, so I mentioned the south, which is true, but that'd be the only.
But that's not an issue for the, for the police department, because we haven't gotten complaints per se.
We have not. We only received the one complaint in the past two years, March fifteenth of twenty. None that we received. I'm not sure if they just came in email, but that was the only call for service that we had.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Bajra?
I think everything I've heard, I'm curious about, sorry, you could ask.
Okay. I have one question.
Okay.
So. And I'm sorry to do this, if, if this come back, I wanted to ask a question about, I was trying to ask it, but I wanted to make sure my card gets a turn. So, um, the one complaint you got was they didn't pick up a permit. Not that there's a fight or there is something dangerous or gunshot or anything.
I don't know that was, I don't know that the complainer knew about the, whether or not they had a permit. It was the noise and the outside, I don't know, I don't recall if it was a DJ, but then outside noise, amplified music, people. That was the.
Got it. And do you recall if it was a weekend, if it was a weekday?
Um, I had it on my paper that's sitting back. There was on three fifteen of twenty twenty-three, which.
Okay. It was about the outdoor event, right?
Correct. I don't believe it was a weekend.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, glad you're still here. Okay. Let me, I, I have some issue with the, what the, what is being said is, is consistent with what's the rest of the city. It's my impression, now that I've been on the Planning Commission for three and a half, almost three and a half years, and, and knowing about the restaurant versus bar hours, okay? It's my impression that we have for restaurants, even with live entertainment, the hours are earlier, okay? They're, the only places that are open till two AM, it's my understanding, are bars. Whether it's whatever the, all the bars, Khartoum, um, Cardiff.
Generally is.
Right? So they're all, we've given them two AM times, okay? The city has given them two, two, the two AM closing times for business. The restaurants almost as far as I know, and that's actually the only two I found that were exceptions to this, were restaurants where closing times of, of ten, uh, ten, eleven o'clock. And actually, there's very few restaurants that have live entertainment in Campbell. There's a couple of exceptions. The only exception on the restaurants where there's a little later, which is midnight, is in the Pruneyard. Okay? Which is the Cedar Room and the the Michael Bluey Place. Right. Okay. Those two have midnight closings. They don't, I don't know if they have live entertainment, but, but they have closings because it's in the Pruneyard, I guess. That's probably why they decided it was okay. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm concerned. My question kind of is whether or not this is really consistent with the rest of this city. Because I haven't found, it's my, from my knowledge, restaurant times should be an earlier closing. And so one of the questions I have about this is the previous CUP, which was years ago, when we're, when we're approving a new CUP here, that doesn't include the hours changes possibly? Or can we change the hour? Can we ask for hour changes as part of the approval that we would be doing tonight?
You, yes, you, you could ask for changes in the hours, provided you can link it to the impacts of what is being proposed tonight. There has to be a nexus between what is being proposed to be changed and the need to reduce the hours.
Yeah, well, the nexus that I'm suggesting is that that is inconsistent with the rest of the city and that this thing happened for whatever reasons years ago. And, and that's not the way we, we are approving. I mean, we just approved a, I know I'm supposed to only ask questions, but we, we, you know, just, just, we just approved a beer, beer garden with much earlier hours that has live, that has entertainment or allowed music. So I, I don't understand why we should be considering a restaurant with late hours to two AM. The other thing is, is that they don't even, they, they, they don't even have those hours now. They, they've never had those hours. So I'm, I'm not even sure if they're going to take advantage of those hours, but that will be a question for the applicant. So I, I'm questioning whether or not this is consistent with the rest of the city. And I, I just want to know whether or not why don't we consider your testimony?
Well, I would defer to Tracy as far as the other, the restaurants, without having the list in front of me.
Right. They're, while they're allowed to operate until two AM on Fridays and Saturdays, I don't believe they are exercising that right. There is one other live entertainment use associated with the restaurant that's outside of downtown Campbell and the Pruneyard, and that's Little Lou's Barbecue.
Yeah, they close at ten.
I think they're, they, while they might close at ten, I believe they're allowed to have live entertainment eleven AM to eleven PM as well.
Sure. It, it's much earlier than, what, what's their closing time? There's their closing time. Do they have a two AM CUP?
The, the live entertainment, no, they don't have a, well, let's see, Fridays and Saturdays. Let me see if I can pull it up here. I just have it in my notes that they are allowed to operate live entertainment eleven AM to eleven PM daily. And they have a liquor license as well.
Sorry. I understand. So it's, it's, I, I think that's a, that's a, that's, that's a good, a good reference point, because they're in a shopping center off of Major Corridor. That's a, that's, that's, uh, a good, a good reference point, because they're in a shopping center off of Major Corridor. Um, and and so they have, it's their restaurant primarily with live entertainment and a dance floor, okay? So, so I'm still questioning the question of a two A M, okay? That's, that's where my concern is mostly. And I'm not really que- questioning most of the other stuff in terms of time. It's it's the question of having a late night. Two A M, uh, C U P. So I, and and so I I'm asking, if we decide we want to approve this, can we approve it conditionally with a? Um, uh, a, um, a different, with different times?
Sorry, just talking with attorneys who are on the same page. So, uh, in one sense, if the proposal was strictly to change their hours. Without allowing any modifications, that's a different type of hearing replication modification. It's not noticed for that. If the planning commission is considering giving them something more that they're asking for, like an expansion in their live entertainment. But believes with that, you need to modify some of the existing hours. If there's a nexus between those two. Attorney, you can have some discretion there on changing the hours, that's clear.
Yeah, but but but, uh, Director Eastwood, in in the description of the public hearing. It mentions the late hours in conjunction with the application for conditional use permit. So I'm not sure it hasn't been noticed for that. Unless, unless reading it, because the first thing that struck my mind when I read this. Was we were, we were talking about late night hours. It's very clear in there. The, to formalize, uh, onsite general health costs with existing restaurants with late night hours, two A M public closing time. The application under consideration includes a conditional use permit.
Well, I think the issue here is the live entertainment. Being open and serving as a restaurant.
That's why I'm asking if we, if if part of this could have been, you're saying you can't, can't, we can't approve this C U P with different hours.
Well, just ask Tracy to put back in the record today, what are they allowed as a restaurant? If they didn't come to you today, right, where are they allowed legally under their conditions to operate until which time as a restaurant?
They would be, as a restaurant, they would be allowed to operate until. Two A M Fridays and Saturdays and all of their days ceasing at eleven P M. And if we're to split the previously approved admin P D permit.
Okay, all right. And and if the city wanted to get that changed to shorter hours, how would we do that? Or can we do that?
Well, two things. I mean, again, if the. If the commission sees a nexus between allowing the late, late, late night entertainment was proposed today. Need to modify the hours that are existing, you can entertain it. I strongly. Strongly say you have to establish a nexus, because if they didn't, they walked away today, they have those hours. They don't need to come to the city. You'd have to say, in order to expand your live entertainment. We require you to meet the findings that you adjust these hours to that.
E- even though that, even though it's inconsistent with the standards that we've set for restaurant in recent years.
The official use permit is that they're deviating standards if we said. If the other restaurants wanted to operate these hours, they would apply to.
Well, no, no, actually, the the conditional use permit we're, they're trying to get today is to be able to have legally live entertainment inside.
Right, but the hour.
They're not deviating. It's just they're asking for a conditional use permit to do live entertainment indoors, which they hadn't had before, even and they were doing it. Okay, so they're they're formalizing that.
Right.
But that's not deviation. That's like asking for a conditional use permit to do that. Right?
I would have talked about the hours.
Okay, you were talking about they're asking for deviation. They're not asking for deviation. They're asking for a conditional use permit to do live entertainment.
I thought you were concerned about the hours.
I was concerned. I am concerned about the hours and I, but I was asking whether or not as part of this approval process, apparently not. The answer is no, that whether or not we could ask as part of the condition to approve. Reduce the hours. That's what I was asking. Because, because it is inconsistent with what we've been, uh, doing with restaurants in the last decade. Okay, in terms of, uh, an earlier close time.
I want to take a strong poll to see if there's interest in shortening the hours that want to allow them.
Yeah, that would be a little premature prior to the public here.
Yeah, we want to ask the applicant to, maybe they'll. Okay, okay, I I'm just trying to get it out on the table.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, um. Uh, that was my main, um, question, so thank, thank you, gentlemen, um. Uh, okay, I'm I'm done, so we can, um. We can, we can open it up and ask the applicant to, uh, come in and. Come up here and turn the, turn the little brown thing on. Get the, yes, and state your name and, uh.
Good evening, my name is.
We'll give you five minutes.
My name is Parvati, and I'm the owner of Neki Restaurant. I was here a few months ago, talked to you about the application. Uh, I want to thank you, Tracy, for doing all the work for, um, processing the application. We did as you asked. We, uh, applied for, um, the permit, paid the fees, went through several iterations of the application. And here we are. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Good question.
Yeah, uh, what hours do you, like, it sounds like we talked a lot about what you're technically approved for, but what hours do you intend to?
Entertainment starts at seven and it goes to eleven normally. Um, it's very seldom, entertainment stops at eleven. It's very seldom that people stay beyond that time. Um, but however, we've had occasions where there's a, there's a ceremony, there's a wedding, or there's a graduation. People want to stay longer. And that's, that's the reason for two A M, although we've never actually exercised that. But we want to have the option of being there till two A M if, if the guests want to stay for that long. Culturally, um, it is customary for something like a wedding to start late. They don't, they they don't come in at seven o'clock. They come in at nine, nine thirty, ten o'clock, and they want to stay till past midnight. That's the reason for two A M application.
And and between eleven and two, it's, I guess, just returns to eating and drinking and.
Uh, mostly just drinking, yeah, uh, because, uh, we we don't actually serve food that late, uh. So it it's basically just, uh, sitting around and talking and, uh, having a good time. Being to know each other.
Yeah, um, and like, if you looked ahead at the next year compared to the year we just had. Is it on any given night gonna be this same thing you were already doing now, just permitted? Like.
Exactly the same thing, yeah. Nothing is very changed.
Okay, uh, thank you. Those are my questions.
I can go next.
Yeah, you may go next.
Thank you, Chair. Um, welcome, Mr. Sappai, um.
Thank you.
I have been to your establishment several times.
Thank you.
Enjoyed it every single time. I think you run a very fine establishment, um.
Thank you.
And, you know, there is a saying, the proof is in the pudding, you know? If you were not a good operator, you would have more complaints, you would have more issues, you know? Even though you didn't know you need a live entertainment, but the way you operated it, you know, there was no issue, you know, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that, you know, and so. Um, but we just have to go through the motion to make sure that, you know, everything is, um. According to the standards and according to regulations, you know, and you're well within your right to ask for two A M, even if you are not going to use. So, um, makes perfect sense. On those, uh, so, uh, you had that outdoor event twice, one time in twenty twenty-two, one time twenty twenty-three. And nobody approached you after twenty twenty-two that, how come you don't have a permit? You didn't know you needed outdoor permits to?
Yeah, as I discussed last time, there was, there was, we actually did apply for a permit. But if you remember, um.
Oh, it was on.
On the day, on the day of the event, we were contacted saying, actually, it was like ten o'clock in the morning. Someone contacted me and said. You can't have the event at three o'clock in the afternoon. This was after we've, you know, we had like five hundred people or two hundred, however many people they were coming, so it was too late for me to cancel the event. So, um, and then we received a fine, which we paid. And, uh, the next year, again, we applied for a permit. And the permit was, they said it's too late. You can't, you, the permit event is gonna take, the permit process is gonna take several months. It was January, we applied for March, still didn't happen for March. So this year, I said, okay, no more. We we're not gonna do that. If the city doesn't want us to do that without a permit. We're gonna go through the live entertainment permit, and once, once that's proved, we'll, we'll follow the other one, maybe, uh, if that's possible or not.
One, okay, uh, uh, that's all my questions for now, thank you.
Commissioner Gray? Uh, yes, Mr. Sid, I think, yeah, I remember our, our previous discussion. That was. An interesting one, a good one. Uh, I think we reached pretty good agreement, but I, yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't wanna be nitpicky, but actually, that's kinda what we have to be, kind of nitpicky. So I was gonna ask the same question that came up. About from eleven P M to two A M. What's going on? And so the music has to stop.
Music stops at eleven normally.
But alcohol can only be served with food.
Yes.
So if the food has stopped.
Yes.
The people really can't be drinking, or can they, right?
People who actually do order alcohol are the ones who have actually eaten already.
Yeah.
Now, we can't tell them, okay, you've eaten, you've had your alcohol, you can't order another one.
But it doesn't happen too often, it's.
No, it doesn't. Everybody leaves at eleven when the entertainment stops.
Uh, you do have a, uh, a door, and I guess it's maybe leads to the kitchen, the door that faces onto Daryl.
The door, a door that opens to the kitchen, and there's an escape, uh.
But would you, it's usually open. Would you leave that closed then?
No, it's closed. I I personally close all the doors.
Okay.
I close the front door multiple times every, every night, when there's an event, when people walk out, I leave the door open. I make a point at going to the door and closing the door, because I'm concerned about the noise, uh, going outside and disturbing the neighbors.
Now, I, of course, you've been at this restaurant for many, many years.
Twenty years.
And you've had some live music inside at times, right?
Twenty years.
When you, when you've walked, have you heard? I mean, what do you hear? Do you hear? Is is there music outside the restaurant when you're walking?
In the parking lot, yeah, you hear the event.
Heard a little bit, huh, or a lot of?
In our parking lot, in front of the restaurant, you hear.
Yeah, and you probably haven't been walking down Daryl for any reason.
I have. Once you pass the restaurant, you can barely hear, especially in the back, there is a thick wall. So if you go behind that, behind that wall, you can hardly hear anything at all.
And there's no outdoor speakers, of course. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Butler, do you have any questions?
No, uh, thank you for, uh.
Thank you for coming, um, um, yeah, I mean, my my only concern is that. You know, uh, that it it came, uh, uh, it it appeared to me that we're being inconsistent with. Our to how we're, uh, giving hours to restaurants, and I know that the the hours that you got go way back. And and there were different attitude in the city about, about how late things should be open. Mostly because there was a problem with downtown, uh, downtown kind of like, there was a lot of late hour drinking, right? So, um, but my question actually, maybe Tracy will have to jump in on this. So comes, it 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 falls up on Commissioner Gray's question, that the the issue of. Serving alcohol without food, if in fact, the last three hours. They're not serving food or offering to serve food. Uh, would you, would you, do you offer to serve food after eleven o'clock, or do you just shut down the kitchen?
Food is available after eleven, but at that point, everybody has already had dinner. So, aren't anybody orders anything, unless it's a to-go order.
So, so I I'm just talking about the 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 regulation or the, uh, about, about, um. Food and 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 drinking. It it is, is it a matter of them being, it offering? Having food to be offered, whether it's, whether it's ordered or not? Is that how the regulation works?
Her A B C rules because liquor licenses issued to restaurants, um. A full kitchen, full service meals, not little panini sort of meals, but like full service meals. Um, need to be made, um, available anytime that alcohol is being served. Um, and so the idea there is that because it's with a restaurant. You need to be able to order food, have food in conjunction with your drink. The idea is that the drink is ancillary to the food, it's supposed to promote the experience, not necessarily be the sole experience.
I understand. So, so I guess, should we have a problem with the fact that at some point in the evening? Uh, it's not, it doesn't become ancillary anymore. It's like after P M. It's, it sounds like all they're doing, if in fact you were to stay open till two A M because it was a, a wedding and. People were there for those last three hours. Should we be concerned about that? Which, should we? I mean, that's the reason why we have restaurants that close at ten and eleven, is because there's, there's not serving food yet. I mean, that's, that's the way it's, it works in the city. And and so, so I'm just asking whether or not we should be, we should have a concern about whether or not they're meeting the requirements. Of being a restaurant with serving food and as with, along with alcohol beverages.
Mr. Chair, I have a point of order, um, ask them if food is available, and he says, yes.
I'm asking the staff, though, at this point, whether or not it it's, it it meets the requirement, that's all.
Answer to your question, is food available? Yes. Are ordering food is up to them. If they don't order food. They're gonna make food for free, you know, I mean, you have to order food for to make it. Is is the kitchen gonna be closed at eleven? He says, no, it's open. So then, my understanding is, you know.
I I understand what you're saying. I I'm just trying to confirm with staff whether or not we we should have any concern about the fact that. As long as they're making available, uh, food from their menu, we're we're good on this, in your estimates, yes, in your estimation.
Right, uh, the. You are correct that full service meals need to be available at the time of alcohol service, um. Now, if there is, if someone comes in for just drinks. And they're not ordering a full service meal of whatever time of the day, that wouldn't be allowed. Cause it needs to be in conjunction with food, because the alcohol service is supposed to be ancillary and complimentary to the food service.
Let's clarify something. Uh, sure. We actually never allow anyone to, uh, just order alcohol without dining, that, that we just don't allow that. And, uh, a lot of times after eleven o'clock, um, if you're still there, it's because of a wedding that's gone late. And most of those weddings have buffets, right? So the food is available on the, on the floor. And people can serve themselves as long as they stay.
Right, right. Okay, um, anybody have any more questions for the applicant? Well, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have, uh, do you wanna call him? You want me to call? Okay.
So, mission, uh, we have a supplement for the public to want to present, I'll speak on that. Uh, calling first Masood Shahidi, and I apologize about unphrases incorrectly, Masood Shahidi.
Please stick your name when you speak, you have too many. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Masood Shahidi. I'm patriot of this establishment over fifteen years. I know this restaurant wasn't in Campbell. Uh, it was, it's, it started in second and San Carlos downtown San Jose. The gentleman who started this restaurant. It was a family that they had a small Persian restaurant, that was the first restaurant, Persian restaurant in San Jose. And between cooking and serving, he always. And between cooking and serving, he always grabbed his violin and played violin for his customers. And this has been tradition throughout this establishment for a long time. Then they moved to Campbell. When they came, moved to Campbell, because there were a lot of people, community, Persian community was small then. It grew and they wanted to have a bigger place. They came to Campbell and this has become a cultural unity, wherever, whenever this happens, especially on the weekends. And there has been many, ever since, there has been many good famous singers, fam- famous performance from Iran that come and they play. This has been an intricate part of Nagin Restaurant. For live music, entertainment, and good food has been a part of this establishment for a long time. So I think we need to preserve that. I appreciate your your help to keep it going. Thank you, thank you.
Good question. Uh, can you remember when they moved the date or the year at least?
I just, I also wanna make a recommendation that this E A should be turned on for old people like me.
Do you remember what year they moved to Campbell?
Uh, I can't remember, but it was either late seventies or early eighties. It, it, restaurant established in uh on Second and San Carlos, I believe, nineteen seventy-one or seventy-two. Then they came to Campbell, few years.
I believe I went to this restaurant in nineteen seventy-five, there was belly dancing, I remember it back then, bro.
Right.
Thank you.
We were all, in those days, we were all San Jose state students. Thank you, thank you very much.
Omid Shakiri?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Omid, O M I D, my last name is Shakiri, S H A K E R I. My address is two eight nine six Joseph Avenue, Suite one hundred, Campbell, California. I'm also a patron in this restaurant, and I've been going to this restaurant for about thirty some odd years. Uh, of course, it's been changed, changing um ownership uh several times, but uh, Parvish has owned this place for the last twenty years, we've been enjoying the food, the service, the live entertainment. Uh, often I take my family there on the weekends for live entertainment, because they have live entertainment at night. Uh, I've gone to a wedding there, uh, as Parvish mentioned, the weddings start very late, Persian weddings start very late. Eight, nine o'clock, and it goes on. Probably, they still eat, they probably serve Persian parties, they start serving food at ten, eleven o'clock. So it goes on very late and people keep late. And they stay, uh, lots of time, they just say, talk and, and socialize. Um, I've done, I've been to many events here, uh, in, in, uh, in this restaurant. They actually are, I consider them as a Persian institution. People know him, know, know him and his restaurants, they've been around for many, many years. And we really appreciated the, the live entertainment he has, because it's a nice, healthy family restaurant where you can go there and you can do their little dancing and listen to a little bit of music. Um, I'll be, on behalf of myself and my family, I really urge the Prime Commission to approve the live entertainment. And again, if you would please keep the hours to o'clock, although they don't use it every day. But again, I've been to the wedding that has gone beyond eleven o'clock and people, eleven thirty starts eating, people start eating. So they will need that in case, if they have any parties that, that require. Um, thank you very much, and answer your questions.
No, thank you. Thank you. Who's next?
Hussein O'Gary?
Good afternoon, my name is Hussein O'Gary. I have business in the city of Campbell for the last thirty, thirty-five years. And I've been coming with our time a bit to Nagin Restaurant for last twenty-five, thirty years, and we enjoy the food, we enjoy the music. And it's a, as you see, most of us, most of the senior citizens, you know, we don't have too far to go. So I appreciate it if you guys allow the restaurant to continue to serve us, our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so. Also, no dancing on the tables, right?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mal Taji?
Good evening, my name is Motajik, I'm a resident of Saratoga, but have been patronizing Nagin for many years. My grandkids, they all had the first birthday at this venue, very friendly. And we always enjoy live entertainment and we want this to go on, because it's become a tradition to have this kind of activity and venue surviving. So I'm here to support the Friday and Saturday long hour times. Thank you, if you have any questions? And thank you very much.
Malik Bakshi? Malik Bakshi?
Good evening, gentlemen, uh, my name is Malik Bakshi. A retired engineer, been here for fifty years, in San Jose. Uh, uh, one of the first restaurant I've been to in Nagin, uh, all along. We have, uh, my mom memorial here as well, too, to, you know, having people gather together and everything. Uh, our kids' graduation was happening at the same place. Uh, we're here to support the place, because it's a part of our culture to be uh having a place to go to for the community and for even other friends that they're coming out of uh town or out of other cities to entertain, so that's a integral part of our community that we hope to continue to have. Thank you. Question?
Thank you for, thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Big favor, Davar Kales?
Good evening, gentlemen and lady, uh, my name is Davar Kales, and I live in San Jose, California. Uh, I've been, uh, living in, in this area for the past, well, since nineteen eighty-one. Yeah, so, um, I, I wanna be sweet and spoken sweet, and I actually uh second everyone's sentiment, you know, and I don't wanna repeat what they said. But, you know, I have been going to this restaurant for many, many years, with my, my family, my kids on occasions like birthdays and the celebration of, uh, you know, uh, whatever celebration you have. So, um, as far as, um, staying up late, uh, sometimes I do not stay up late, so, um, um, and I, uh, I remember when I, uh, my kids were younger, uh, we would go to a restaurant, uh, early, because, you know, uh, we wanted to eat early. My kids would fall asleep and I didn't wanna go there at ten o'clock like Iranian people, and when you go to their houses, you know, they serve you dinner at ten, eleven o'clock, my kids would sleep and then we'd go all hungry. So anyhow, I don't wanna take up much of your time. I just wanna hear to support Nagin, very nice establishment, you know, very nice people. And hopefully they stay in a, a, whatever the hours they have been on. So, uh, that's it for me, if you have any questions, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you.
Abe, Abe, uh, Ashari?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Abe Ashari, I'm here more than fifty years in California, mostly my life is here. This is the first restaurant, and my friends mentioned it in San Jose. I remember those days, I moved here, this is the best food and service in Northern California. And always we going that, we've been to this restaurant all the time with my family, with friends for party. And we met, all friends mentioned that we had a dinner late, our culture, after ten o'clock. We're going out for party, we're sitting and talking all the time and drinking. I would like to prove it, the time they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Hadi Gafuri?
Good evening, good evening, welcome. Uh, my name is Hadi Gafuri, uh, I've been a resident, uh, of, uh, San Jose, Saratoga, Campbell for past, oh, let's say, uh, almost sixty years, um, since nineteen sixty-eight. Uh, I, uh, blessed to live here and enjoy the Persian food, the, uh, restaurant that actually existed before this, but Mister Shakiri was, I'm sure, it's called Mansour, uh, which was on the second street, then they came here and he, there was entertainment and it was, you know, great, uh, part of the, uh, the process of entertainment. I myself sing, so occasionally I sing at Mansour's, uh, events that I am in charge. Normally, um, I bring, uh, all my associations, we have different clubs, different soccer club, different institutions. We bring him here, my wife actually was there at the New Year, we were dancing on the floor, she's a great dancer. Um, the food is, uh, exceptionally well, uh, besides of the fine cuisine, the, the, the entertainment actually is a great, uh, uh, part of the, uh, our culture, it, it creates unforgettable memories between, uh, friends and families. Um, and I would strongly urge and suggest to, uh, provide what it, uh, means, uh, for them as far as the hours and the, the. I do appreciate that, any questions?
Thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Makid Costawan, I'm a engineer, business owner, and part-time musician. When I moved from, uh, Florida to, uh, California, San Jose, uh, Nagin at that time was Mansour, was one of the places that I was performing at nights. And at that time, we could play up to twelve o'clock, to thirty in the morning. And I don't remember during all those years, we had any trouble whatsoever from any neighbors, from any, although it was always served alcohol. But among the different form of businesses, as you see, there's gonna be some sort of trouble, maybe sometimes. This particular one, from the time that I remember, is was always as a family business. A very family-oriented business, and I urge you to please extend it eh, this Fridays and Saturday nights to, to, to o'clock, just for the reason that the gentleman that they asked for. That's my consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Siam of Jastan?
Good evening, everyone, you guys doing well? My name is Siamak Jastan, first of all, just what I'll say, accept my apology because of my English. But I do my best to, to, uh, say whatever I just wanna say, you know, uh, let me see, I'm like Jastan, I just came to United States, two thousand eight. In San Jose, California, and I'm performing every single weeks from two thousand eight. And this is a place, right now Nagin, uh, I'm singing for the last two years, every weekend I'm there. You know, I'm trying to say very simple, this place, uh, how do I say? It's an iconic place for all the Persian people who lived before me in California, San Jose area, and it's a well-known restaurant. From Los Angeles, everyone, they know this place because of good food, good service. Thank you, uh, she was showing you guys our dance floor. You guys mentioned about the noise and stuff, you know, uh, I just wanted to say very simple. If you guys pay attention, our dance floor is very small. Most of the time, we are a three-piece band, me, Ali Reza is there. And then, and one percussion player or drummer, which is very mellow. We don't make a lot of noise, you know, because we are three-piece band, the, the, it's not a big, uh, dance, a big stage for us. I promise you guys, if you guys allow to, this operation goes forward like always and before. Uh, we're gonna keep this place safe, like family. Uh, if you guys ask everyone, you know, most of people, they coming, every weekend they have a birthday. They have engagement, they have, you know, they love this place. We're gonna keep this place like before and promise you guys to even better than before. If you guys allow us, sometimes if Mister Parvish, uh, I don't know if it's okay, let me say that it's not gonna be all the time until two o'clock, but we're gonna get permit from you guys until two o'clock in case, but most of the time, people eleven thirty, eleven forty-five. Because I have a followers from, uh, Tracy, Torlock, Modesto, San Francisco, uh, everywhere, they coming to this place, there is thousands of restaurant at the great, you know. But they coming to this place because they love this place. Uh, we're gonna keep this place, family, not whatever you guys want us to do. We're gonna promise you guys to do that, very simple.
Okay, thank you. By the way, your English is quite, your English is quite good.
Thank you so much, I did my best, also, I, 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 I sing in front of one thousand people, it's not hard. One of you guys was very hard.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Anybody got mine? Okay, all right, we'll, uh, close, uh, public hearing. We start with you, uh, Commissioner Buckbinder?
So, um, I understand there's some concerns about this late set of hours. Hello, block with Denny, so twenty-four hours, and restaurants are open twenty-four hours. Um, this, like a straightforward request, these are things that we allow experiment, uh, there would have to be some only reason like for us not to approve the initial use permit, and there's simply not, there's not, uh, trouble apart from they didn't have a permit for this, uh, the establishment's in there for a long time. There, there's simply no reason to think that they're going to be bad actors. So I would support this and I really appreciate members of the community, uh, turning out, especially people who have not given public comment before. We really appreciate your, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that this, uh, restaurant is a, you know, really an asset for, for Campbell, for the area. Seems like a great place, uh, you know, I, I, and I, so, you know. So if the one, the establishment is fine, completely fine, the way that I, that I look at it, and I think commissioners, this or and all of us really, because we issue a fairness, so if the next restaurant comes in and asks for the same thing, you know. Well, these guys got it, then you kinda have to give it to these guys too, it's only fair, and, uh, I'll be creating a problem per se. Let's take one respect for this item, I, uh, for, in this particular case of two AM. One thing we could say is, well, they got, eh, this, this place was already approved for two AM. But that kind of avoids the issue, I mean, is it, is it still okay, uh? And, and it gets tricky, you can see where it gets tricky, and, and I do know there are some, uh, residences very close to Nagin Restaurant. Uh, the staff report has said, actually said sixty feet for the coffee tree. That would be the closest actual apartment, I guess. Ninety feet across the street for the petty lane, uh, so, you know, it is pretty close, uh. Police Department hasn't had problems, the city hasn't had problems, uh, other than the, the outdoor events, which we're not approving, and we're not having. Unless they make a special permit, I know we already had that discussion a few months ago, uh. And I know, you know, with the CUP process, if there is an issue, uh. As Tracy said, if there were three complaints within a certain amount of time, then we might require another, uh, some more sheetrock or drywall or. I don't know what you could do, uh. Yeah, but, you know, there are remedies if there is a problem, so, uh. You know, again, I, for this particular restaurant and the request, you know, it's perfectly fine, I gotta be thinking, well. Fairness, the issue of fairness for everybody, and I, you know, I, I think, I think we could be fair, uh. You know, it, it might come up, it might come up, this seems like a relatively unique, uh, kind of a business and niche. Uh, so I think it's a plus, I think, uh, uh, given that, given the fact that we do have, uh. You know, safeguards, we have conditions, and if there are issues, we can revisit again, that kinda gives me a, a. Some comfort in, in that, you know, in, in being fair to the neighbors nearby and, uh, and being fair to everybody, so. Yeah, I, I would be in favor of this and, uh, see what happens. Thank you. Mr. Seppker?
Yes, please, thank you. Thank you, sure. So, um, the way I look at this is that, um, he's the ideal businessman for our city, you know. He operates an establishment, he makes so many community members happy, he doesn't cost the city any. Cost with the cost of police department, collects taxes, pays the taxes, is not in trouble with, you know, I mean. What more can we want, you know, and if the next guy walks in and says, eh, give it, give it to him, give it to me, well, he's a proven operator, you know. He's not an unknown quality. He has proven with his tact that he respects the laws of the city, he, um, you know, he will operate within the guide and. Uh, he knows his limits and to me, what else can we ask for, you know, so. Um, you know, I, eh, completely appreciate your concerns, the neighbors, absolutely correct, but. It's proven that he's also concerned, you know, and I'm sure if one of them goes and talks to him and says, can you please do this? He'll say, I will. You know, that's the way I see, you know, that's, um. I used to have a hundred and one-year-old aunt. This was her favorite restaurant. Every once in a while, when she was younger, in her late eighties. So I would, I would take care to Nagin Restaurant, have, um, lunch with her, you know, once a week, six months of.
Did it help to get to one hundred and one?
I think so. I think, you know.
They were two AM, close.
Yes, you know, so, so to me, they're doing something right, you know, uh. But anyway, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure you know which way I'm leaning, you know, I think, I think they deserve to. Get the permit and continue serving our great city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fields.
Uh, yeah, I mean, on the merits of the proposal, I'm, right, uh. And I appreciate the applicant, I think, doing exactly what we'd ask, which is, realize it wasn't a permanent place. Please work with us, came, did the process, came here today, uh, that feels good. Strong track record, like we were saying, uh, so I'm, I'm for the proposal. In my unofficial comments, it's just great to see what a community it is. For all of you, I'm proud as a Campbell resident that we have this place, this is part of our community, so. Glad, uh, to see it's had such a strong history and open for fifty-four years, so, yeah, I'm for it.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, I don't, I didn't want anybody to think that I was, like, necessarily opposed to it, I was, um. We, you know, we have a responsibility as commission to review this stuff and, and look at the, the code. And, um, I, I wanted to make sure that, um. We were, we, we are, uh, you know, the, the issues of, of restaurant hours is, comes up in front of us. And has this history in the city with alcohol sales and all that kinda stuff, so. So, uh, so I just wanted to make sure that, um, you know, that, um. We're, we're in line with what the city is, uh, what's appropriate for the city, um. I, I, I echo, uh, Commissioner Fields in terms of, eh, eh, I think it's great that you, you all showed up. You, you did a good job of bringing your, uh, your contingent there. Yeah, and so, um, uh, uh, to plead your case, uh, I don't think you really needed to plead that hard, but, but. Uh, it's very much appreciated that you came, uh, to show your community togetherness and, and, and I'm. Uh, like Commissioner Fields, I, I'm glad that we have a place like this where people come, uh, to, to, uh, as a community. Um, and to celebrate and feel, feel, uh, like it's a special place. And I'm glad it has such a great reputation and that, uh, um. I think the gentleman who says he sings every week, uh, I, I know that there was, I, I went on the website, uh, the last time you were here and. I saw this big poster of this guy singing, I guess that, that's, that's, yeah, so, um. Yes, so, um, I, I'm certainly, I, I think, I think as Commissioner Craig said, there, there are. There are things in place in case there is a problem. My, my only concern was that, you know, I actually lived on the west side of Campbell forty years ago. I used to go to the round table in the, in the, in the, in the shopping center, there's no longer there. Now has whatever, three hundred residential units or something, right? And, and so you have a, you have a neighborhood behind you, you have a neighborhood next to you, and so, uh, there's always a concern in the city about, about. You know, whether there's gonna be noise and problems with residents, that's, that's issue. Doesn't sound, you've been doing this for twenty years, doesn't sound, uh, with the exception of time when you brought it outdoors. There's not been any issues, so I, I think that's a great track record for you. And so it makes me feel better that we can move ahead with this and, uh, uh, give you your, um, approval. And, um, and, and that, uh, like Commissioner Craig said, there are things in place in terms of if there are. Uh, if there are, um, problems and, uh, and there are, there are official, uh. Things that come into the city, uh, into the police department, then, then there's, uh, there, there, there are things that can be dealt with and may, it may be. Possible mitigations, so, um, I have no problem with this, I'm, I'm glad that, uh. We have a restaurant that's been so successful for all these years and has brought community to it, so I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it as well, so. Um. Do you have a motion?
Alright, good question.
You, Mr. Campa.
Thank you, sir. Adopt a resolution referencing attachment A. Approving a conditional use permit to allow indoor live entertainment and to formalize onsite general alcohol sales. Associated with an existing restaurant, Nagin Restaurant, with late-night hours. Two AM public closing time on Friday and Saturday. Finding the project categorically exempt under section fifteen-three oh one of CCO.
Do you have a second? Second? Okay, I, I have a motion and a second. Can we take the co- a vote? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Gray? Aye. Mr. Buckbinder?
Aye.
Pastor Campa?
Aye.
Chair Scissor? Aye. Okay, it passes you down the sleeve. Congratulations.
Oh, let's see, thank you so much, guys, thank you.
Sure.
Police Department, thank you so much.
It could be a fiddle.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to invite all of you guys, uh, Persian food tomorrow.
Is it? We have more to do, we have more, we have more.
Can you coordinate, please? I, I just want everyone to come, can you?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I have to find another time. Thank you, guys. You guys are awesome. God bless you all. Thank you. Alrighty.
Just say that, don't forget to say that last little bit about it's a, it's a final, less approved, appealed and writing the city.
Okay.
So then, uh, but.
Alright.
But you don't have to, I don't care.
Yeah, uh, we, 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 we said it in the intro, so I, okay, okay, do it, I guess I don't. So that's final unless appealed and written to see quick within ten calendar days. Thanks, Tracy. Um, and, uh, we have a report from the Community Development Director?
Uh, I have no invites to any restaurants. Super cool.
We, we have to pay for our way, right?
Reminder, if you find any coupons on your desk, let us know, that's back in the forums, I can allow that to happen. Uh, just a reminder, uh, starting June, you're starting at seven o'clock. Uh, however, June eleventh, it looks like we don't have business items, so, uh, second, I guess, you probably have a night off.
Are we sure on that, or is that just?
All evidence I have is no projects going to here. We have a SARC item, uh, but nothing coming to mind. So that's your next meeting, I'm sure, uh, the following meeting, hopefully there's something coming up, but it will be at seven o'clock after that.
Okay.
Uh, other than that, uh, we are in budget season, uh, if you're interested, uh, there has been some budget challenges this year. Uh, but all departments have looked at some adjustments, including mine, and based on everything I know, uh, things are equally. Twice out, without too much pain. So I'd say council will consider, um, initial budget next week and then final adoption, uh, later in the month, if you'd like to track that. Other than that, the only thing I have to report is we're finalizing our recruitment on our unhoused specialists, so this is a grant-funded position that's gonna help address homelessness. Hopefully we have someone on board in the next month or two.
And Rob, because that's a grant, that's, that's safe, right? That's not part of the.
It's, uh, uh, general, uh, general fund neutral, yes, we got a grant from an organization that paid for it, so that's safe.
Cause that might be the only, only one for a while.
So, so do you have multiple candidates at this point?
We do, yeah, we finished our interviews, uh, I'd say there's a top candidate, we're doing some reference checks on. So hopefully that works. One, one of our top candidates is on board the next month or two.
Okay.
So, um, what is, like, at stake at the budget, uh, negotiations? Like, are we just not gonna get some policy done? Is that what I got?
Uh, I mean, there's no, there's no layoffs, uh, the C-Manager has announced hiring freeze. Positions, positions are vacant, all departments, uh, went back. I think the initial feedback from council is that's a good measure, uh, we wanna make sure our top priority goals will be achieved, so it'll be a little bit more nuanced. Looking where the cuts are in areas where we don't achieve our goals, that council has top priorities. All departments have gone back and I have, like, about two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of my budget on areas where we can shave things down. So, all events I have, talking to our budget director and city managers, as things wants out. Any layoffs or any more drastic measures to.
That's answer. I have a question about this, I don't know if you really wanna answer it, but, so I read the article, it was an article in Spotlight about this, it was four million dollars show. And, and they said that a big number, big private, a million a quarter had to do with pension. Okay, so, I guess, just, you know, I don't normally look at the budget and stuff, but, but it's like. One would think from terms of a pensions, pension shortfall, that you would have had advanced notice. On pension, on a pension shortfall, because it's like. Uh, unless suddenly a whole lot of people retired unexpectedly. I mean, do you, is there some kind of, was this expected?
I'm asking, honestly, I couldn't give you a, I'm not the expert. I will say one thing, we did, uh, lose a pretty big sales tax generator that left the city, so that, on the revenue side. Uh, I'm trying to remember, I think it was, I get confused between two, if my, if the name was Dash, or I might have that off. But it's a firm that sort of grew out, grew out of their space down in the Dell area. Uh, we do have a new economic development plan, we have an interim economic development manager, I think that. Yeah, so council's expressed interest in having a full-time position, cause that brings in businesses revenue. Uh, that was, uh, I guess, it's a hit on the other side of the equation.
It looks like there's somebody going into the bank building, who level up was, does anybody?
I always saw, yeah, I always saw a news report of, uh, I can't remember the name, it's like a Star Wars-based business.
Oh, no, it's like some kind of bar and grill thing.
Yeah, it's, like, somewhere else, it's like, used to be San Jose, it's, uh, it's, I think it's seven, something. Last thing I'll say is, uh, uh, our building inspectors worked hard. To, uh, get Dopio Zero to get their, uh, final inspection, so they are, they are open for business, legally open for business.
Yeah, it's cool. And the, and the mural, that'd be.
Yeah, really excited to see that.
And Krassi's gonna start the building tomorrow, right?
That's, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay, I'll, I'll adjourn, okay, I'm gonna adjourn till June twenty-fifth unless we hear otherwise. I'm sure there'll be official notification of cancellation. Okay.